We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting for tonight, which is Monday, December the 18th, 2023. Our invocation will be done by the Reverend Brian Berryhill of Heritage Baptist Church, and after that, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight, thankful, Lord, for another opportunity to open up this meeting. And we pray, Lord, for each member, Lord of the City Council, and every official in our city, and just ask your blessings upon them and their families. Lord, we ask you at this time, Lord, to be with us throughout the agenda of the meeting tonight. We pray a hedge of protection about our community, and, Lord, just ask you, Lord, to lead, guide, and direct in each and everything we do, and we thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Berryhill, we always appreciate your invocation and prayers. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting. My name is Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a City Council Regular Meeting of Agenda Items where official action will be taken tonight on the items that were discussed during our Legislative Work Session on last Thursday evening. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business, and we'd love to hear from you at that time. There are a few protocol issues I'd like to go over this evening and how the meeting will be conducted, and then we can get into the body of the meeting. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you deviate from that, a warning, we'll have a second deviation will result in us discontinuing the conversation by turning the microphone off. Only once a person speaking at a time, please. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation while you're at the podium. We ask that you are, if you have any printed materials, that you would give those materials to our City Clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker to my right, and she will make copies and disseminate those copies to myself and council members. We're only required to accept public comments during required public hearings, and if you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the Agenda Items will be handled this evening. The Committee Chairperson will read the Agenda Item, then that person representing that Agenda Item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions if we have additional comments or questions that will be raised tonight based on the information that we had last week. If some more information comes forward, we may ask more questions. After that, the Committee Chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a portion, you'll have those in favor of the item. It's 20 minutes, and those in opposition, you have 20 minutes as well, and each person has five minutes to speak. There's only one opportunity to come forward to bring the Agenda Item, and prior to coming to the podium, we ask that you would please fill out an information card. It's blue, it's out on the desk. We ask that you would fill that information card out, give us your name and address for the record, and then when you come forward, you would hand that card to Ms. Acker, again with the beautiful red sweater on. She will take that information, our City Clerk, then you come to the microphone, and you have five minutes to talk to us. And that's about Agenda Items, and/or if there's not an Agenda Item after the meeting, during comments from citizens and delegates, you can come forward, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business to remain to the City of Douglasville. This meeting is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and tonight, the vote will take place on those items. Please address all your comments and concerns to the Chair, and again, if you have printed materials, give those to Ms. Acker. That's a whole lot of talk and a lot of information. Hopefully, we're all on the same page, and we have an understanding on how the meeting will be held this evening. There are hard copies outside on the desk if you'd like to have an Agenda Item, a paper Agenda Item, and/or you can follow us on the screen above me. Now, we'll move on. We're on Item Number Four, which are announcements and presentations. We don't have any, so we'll go to Item Number Five, which is Approval of the Agenda. So I will open the floor to approve the Regular Meeting for the Agenda for tonight, which is December 18th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve the Agenda. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve the Agenda. Do we have any concerns, comments, or any corrections from council members as relates to the Agenda this evening? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the Agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Agenda is approved as presented, so that's Item 23-460 is approved. Now, we'll move on to the Approval of the Minutes. So I'll open the floor for Approval of the Minutes of November 30th, 2023 Legislative Work Session, and the Minutes of December 4th, 2023 Regular Meeting.
Motion to approve Minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by Mayor Pro Tem, and second by Councilmember Estes, to approve Item 23-460. Do we have any corrections as relates to the Legislative Work Session and the minutes from the Regular Meeting last week? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item 23-460 is unanimously approved. Now, we'll move on to Item Number Seven, which is the Consent Agenda. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. It's a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. See, it's fast on the seconds. So it's been properly moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Do we have any concerns, comments, or questions as relates to the Consent Agenda? Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Now, we're down to Item Number Eight, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by City Council Member Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Housing and Community Affairs Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Number Eleven, Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. We'll move on to Item Number Twelve, which is Personnel Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on now to Item Number Thirteen, which is Planning and Development Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items tonight under Planning and Development.
Yes, sir.
I've taken the liberty to swap Items C and A, so I'm going to start on Item C tonight
Yes, sir.
in hopes of helping the applicant make it to a basketball game for him.
Sure. Yes, sir.
So let's start with Item C. That is considered an amendment to Exhibit B of Ordinance 2021-57 to reflect the motion as stated at the Legislative Work Session Meeting on December 2nd, 2021, to amend one car garages on townhomes and sprinklers only in townhomes on 18.5 acres at the intersection of Burnt Hickory Road and Midway Road in Land Lot 836, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 08361820002, application by S.A. Land Group, care of Adam Baker. Ms. Marissa Jackson had given us information on this item on Thursday, and there may be information that you all may have questions about. Again, that's the reason we are bringing it up again tonight, and we will vote after any discussion.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Jackson, do you have any new information to provide us with?
No, sir.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments that Madam Mayor or council may have concerning this item? Okay. Any information that the applicant, Mr. Baker, any comments Mr. Baker may want to make? Okay. Seeing none, then, if there are no additional information, then I make a motion that we approve Item 23-465.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve Item 23-465. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Adams, and second by Councilmember Estes, to approve Item 23-465, which is Item C. Do we have any continued or other comments, concerns, as we continue with this item? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-465 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Good luck, sir. We'll then move back up to Item A.
Yes, sir.
Consider Request for a Special Land Use Permit for a Guest House for Properties Owned R2, Single Family Residential Detached District, being located 0.91 acres at 8617 Bowden Street, Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0016015E045, application by Calvin Willis. Ms. Jackson, do you have any new information on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Does the applicant have any new information they would like to share? If so, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and we will then have public, we'll have comment after that. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Calvin Willis. 8617 Bowden Street, Douglasville, 30134.
Good evening.
Let me first just start by saying that I appreciate each and every one of you at City Council and the mayor for all of the great work that you do in the City of Douglasville. My family and I moved here in 2014, and we chose Douglasville because it is, we looked at it as a great place to live, to raise a family, great school district, low crime rate, safe neighborhoods, and all of those things. So I just want to say, first off, that I commend all of you for the decisions that you have made to lead Douglasville forward with all of the development and the progress that we are seeing. Just want to say thank you for that. Second is, however you all decide to vote tonight, I'm okay with whatever decision that you make. There will be no hard feelings on my end. I think, you know, I trust you all that the best decision will be made, so I wanted to get that out the way. Thirdly, to Council, to Councilman Nicole Miller, on last week, I felt that you spoke to me in a way that was very hostile, and to that a personal attack, it made a personal attack, as well as it was rude, in my opinion. And I say that because you went on to say that I'm a bad neighbor, which that made it a personal attack. Whereas, and you want to speak to that, I would let you interject.
No, you're okay. You can finish.
Okay. So anytime, and I understand my neighbor's point of view, that construction debris was left on the side of the road for some time, maybe longer than usual, but a few weeks, I imagine, which is the timeframe that we were doing the renovation on both structures. So it's common that you will see construction debris while you're doing work, no different than if you're building a brand-new house from the ground up. You're gonna have sheet, you're gonna, excuse me, you have plywood supplies laying around. It's not gonna look pretty at that point in time. So what, as neighbors, we have to do is realize, okay, they're building a house, or they're doing a renovation, they're doing rehab work. So what we do is, we say, okay, that's why that's there, number one, not because the person's being naked and just leaving trash around, because I don't leave trash around. I don't litter, and I teach my kids, we don't litter. You know what I mean? We keep our neighborhood safe, and as I mentioned, excuse me, as I showed the last meeting, I make things better. When I do my houses, I improve them to where it improves the community. My neighbors may not have been aware of that because they never bothered to walk across the street and have a conversation with me. They assumed that I was gonna have a personal care home, a group home, all of these different things, because they're looking up saying, oh, he has a nonprofit, so maybe he wants to use it for this, or maybe he wants to use it for that. They looked up listings on Zillow, maybe he, it's a triplex, or he's gonna rent it out to three different individuals, but as I mentioned last week, it's not a triplex, and I'm not renting it to three individuals, don't have plans to even rent it at all anymore. That was, that may have been a thought at one point in time, but that listing they're pulling is from March, which I'm done even thinking about it in terms of that. So it is truly a guest house, but I understand that, I understand now that I should have pulled permits before anything got started. I acknowledge that. I am well aware that that should have happened, and going forward, in any projects that I do, I will make sure that that happens. And, but just wanted to acknowledge that there's no new information. I guess, in terms of the missed court date, I imagine that there, to me, there was a surprise citation that came about, because when I got the first complaint on this, probably about, it's been some time now, maybe six, seven months ago, I immediately started to see what I needed to do to get this all resolved, which the first step, as the Matthew Alexander, the buildings manager, came out, he looked at everything, said, well, for the most part, it is all, everything looks good. Pull your permit. Once you get, so I said, well...
Mr. Willis, your time is up.
Okay, sorry.
That meant time had expired.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, thank you all for your consideration. Sorry for going over. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've had the public hearing, we have heard from the applicant, we've heard from those in favor and against this application for a special land use permit. I'll give one other opportunity for mayor or council to make any comment. Whomever might want to, please speak up. Anyone?
Anna.
That's totally up to you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Mr. Willis, my apologies. My intent was not to make you feel attacked in any way. My comment of bad neighbor was something very general term that I feel like we use sometimes if a, if a company is coming in wanting to come into Douglasville, or if they're wanting to expand, have they been a good neighbor? Did they follow the proper process that needs to be done? And I guess I assume that as a realtor and as an investor, that you should know the process to follow. And I hope that going forward in the future, when you choose to do projects in Douglasville, and I hope that you continue to do those, but I hope that you do check in with us at Community Development to make sure that you're following the proper process, because it's hard to go back now to correct some of those steps. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank Councilmember Miller for apology. That's the big person, as well as Mr. Willis. We, as I said in the beginning, we don't want to have a debate or argument, but of course, we're passionate about issues when we bring them forward, so we are a city of civility, and the elected officials, we hold ourselves to the same standard as we hold our citizens and those that we serve, to be courteous to each other and respectful and professional. So we appreciate your comments, and we thank you so much, Councilmember Miller. We appreciate your comments as well, but we try to treat people how we want to be treated. So thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay. Then moving forward, Item 23-452, based upon the information that we have received and the, I guess, the manner in which the permits were not received or not pursued, I would really have no choice but to make a motion that we deny Item 23-452. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to deny Item 23-452. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second to deny Item 23-452. Do we have any additional comments, concerns, or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of the approving, not approving, but voting yes to deny Item 23-452, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, other sign, nay. The ayes have it. Item 23-452 is denied.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on then to the last item, and point of order, I'll ask our legal counsel, since we have not approved the item prior, do we need to take any action on the consideration of a variance?
Well, I don't see the benefit of it.
So that's...
Okay. Then, upon instruction by our legal, then we will, I will take no action on Item 23-453.
Okay.
Have I done that properly?
I believe so.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have under Planning and Development tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Willis and Councilman Miller. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 15, Public Relations Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, I have a couple items, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have item A, Consider Application for Alcoholic Beverage License for the Retail Package Sale of Wine and Malt Beverages at Following Establishment, Proposed License Quick Trip Corporation Quick Trip Number 1709, Location 9293 Highway 5, Proposed Agent Outlet Manager, Ms. Celine. Come on down, please. The required fees have been paid into the Finance Department. And Ms. Celine, state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Shabania Cillian, 9293 Highway 5, Douglasville, Georgia.
Do we have any additional questions from the mayor and council? If not, I'd like to approve Number 23-462.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Davis, and second by Councilmember Estes, to approve Item 23-462. Do we have any concerns, comments, or questions, or any additional conversation from what we had last Thursday from council members? I don't see anyone. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-462 is unanimously approved. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
See you at Quick Trip.
I'll see you.
Thank you. Okay. Item B, Consider Request for Change in Agent Outlet Manager and Transfer of the Alcoholic Beverage License for the Unpermitted Sale and Consumption of Wine and Malt Beverages and Spirit Liquor at the Following Establishment, Proposed License Floris Georgia LLC, DBA Taste Crab House, Location 6842 Douglas Boulevard, Suite A, Current Agent Outlet Manager, Mr. Tang, Proposed Agent Outlet Manager, Xing, the required fees have been paid into the Finance Department. Mr. Xing, would you please come down? How are you doing today?
Good. How are you?
Say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Xing Jie Xing, and the location 6842 Douglas Boulevard, Suite A, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135.
Mayor and council, do we have any additional questions for Mr. Xing? If not, I'd like a motion to approve 23-463 for approval.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Samuel Davis, and second by Councilmember Howard Estes, to approve Item 23-463. Councilman Davis has already asked if we have any additional comments or concerns, but I'll reiterate that, any other problems or issues. We don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-463 is unanimously approved. Congratulations.
Thanks so much, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. We'll move on to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism. Is that Rec, yeah, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Technology Committee has no business at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight. The first item is authorize the mayor to sign the request to move from conditional to full approval letter, and authorize the city staff to transmit the letter to the Georgia Department of Transportation. Mr. Thompson, do you have any new information?
No, ma'am, not at the moment.
All right, thank you. So I did send out a letter to the mayor and council in regards to our communication with GDOT, although this specific item does not relate to that, but I just wanted to make sure we reiterate that we do not just rubber stamp items with GDOT future on anything. So this is for the certification of our staff to make sure that they are covering all the requirements regarding training, and also looking for an engineer to oversee and more communicate with GDOT. Am I correct, Mr. Thompson?
That is correct.
Do we have any questions from our mayor and council?
Yes.
Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Ms. Burdanley.
Yes, sir.
So I wasn't here, and I apologize for not being here Thursday night late in the meeting, but basically, this goes from a conditional approval process that you all are now able to do to a full approval?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
I don't know how much congratulations was made on Thursday, but to me, if you're dealing with GDOT and you have the possibility and the authority to make full approval, kudos to you, sir, and to your department. Great job. Thank you.
Yes. So full approval still means that we have to communicate with GDOT? Full approval, you still have to get a stamp from GDOT? Is that correct?
No, ma'am, that's...
Oh, wow. So I have a lot for you to approve real quick, okay? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve Item 23-477.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved by the Chair, Dr. Burdanley, and second by Councilmember Adams, to approve Item 23-477. Do we have any additional comments, concerns, or questions as relates to this item? We did receive your letters, well-written, and points were taken. So we will definitely not have rubber stamps, continue to oversee what's going on. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-477 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The second item is Adopt a Resolution Approving a Projects List for the City's Application for the Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, LMIG, for 2024 Authorized City Staff to Submit the LMIG Application and Authorize the Mayor to Sign the Local Government Affidavit and Certification and the LMIG Statement of Final Project Expenditures in Connection with the Application. Are there any new items, Mr. Roberts?
I do not have anything new, and no one has asked for anything new, unless you have something tonight.
Okay, great. Anything from our mayor and council? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Just excited. Can't wait to see resurfacing on the road started.
Absolutely. Mr., anyone else have any comments, questions? Mr. Roberts, Carden Street, had a lot of work on that street from WSA. When is it? I didn't see them on the list, and it's, I just wanted to see, when are we going to pave that street?
I would have to look at it, but as I mentioned the other night, there, we will be doing more paving as, as the 2022 SPOSS funds continue to come in, and I will have Todd work on that while I'm...
Okay.
For the next few days.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Yeah, I know WSA did a lot, and you could not do any paving during that time, but it's probably ready for that. But thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, Madam Mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 23-479.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
It was a dueling seconds. Do we, Ms. Acker, do we get Councilman Estes or Mayor Pro Tem? Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second moved by the chair, Councilmember Dr. Burdanley, and second by Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller, Councilmember, to approve item 23-479. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or concerns as relates to this item for Mr. Roberts and LMIG? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-479 is unanimously approved. All righty. Well, we are down to other business. Do we have any other business to come before council tonight from council members? Yes, sir?
I don't, I know I didn't mention this, and I meant to a couple weeks ago. I just wanted to tell staff, all the staff that was involved in putting up the Christmas lights and the parade and the lighting, the Christmas tree, that was a fantastic evening and well-done. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff for that. I didn't a couple weeks ago, meant to, and appreciate staff, all their efforts.
Thank you, Coach Watts. It was a beautiful parade, and the rain just looked a little sprinkly, so it looked like fairy dust. It was wonderful. And every time we drive by, we see people taking pictures with families dressed in pajamas and all kinds of festive things, so we appreciate that. I do have something, and council members can chime in as well. This is Councilmember Mark Adams' last city council meeting. And it's bittersweet for me. I'm going to try not to be upset. But I'm going to read this plaque to you, Councilmember Adams, and then we're going to come around and take a photo after we make some comments. Look up. Look up.[762.64][762.64](Laughter). We got to. Aw, it's beautiful family that he that he's so proud of and that he talks about all the time. Beautiful wife and daughters. And he's always saying, "Go Dogs." So we're going to read this, and we'll have some comments. And thank you all so much, family, for coming in and helping to celebrate your husband, your father, your grandpa, your son-in-law, your brother. It says, "Thank you for your service, Councilman Mark Adams, War II, Post II, in appreciation for all of your hard work and dedication throughout the years. You will be missed." Douglasville, Georgia. It's red on the bottom. It says, "Go Dogs" on the bottom. So let's give him a hand, and then we'll I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem because he usually talks the longest. I'm going to have him go first. No, Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem.
How much time we have?
Two minutes.
By the way, I'm taking notes, Mayor Pro Tem. I'll be on that side of the desk next month.
I just, I did actually make a list of more, of additional committees that we are nominating you for, by the way, so I hope you put some time away. It's, our terms have overlapped for a few years now, and I, and it has been an absolute privilege and honor to serve you, Mark. I've learned a great deal from you. And, you know, we've had a few differences over the years, but they were good differences, and I think we both grew from them. And it's one of those moments where, like the mayor said, it's bittersweet. You know, I wish you could stay on, but I know we all have reasons to move on for stuff, but I know our paths will cross in the future, and when they do, I look forward to that so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Nicole Miller, your ward mate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Goodness. Councilman Adams, it has been such an honor and a privilege to sit here next to you for these last four years. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate your guidance and your support over the years as you've kind of taken me under your wing and helped, I hope, mold me into the council person that I am and hope to be. But I think my biggest honor is to call you friend. It has meant so much to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dr. Burdanley?
Hi, Councilman Adams. I tell you, it's been a minute. I just have just enjoyed your presence, and we've had so many conversations about our grandchildren. It's great to see you here. We share pictures a lot. And continue to be the servant that God called you to be. And enjoy your time with your family. Be blessed.
Thank you, Dr. Burdanley. Coach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
It's, I've been really enjoying these eight years just being on this council. I just wanted Mark to know how much I've really leaned on him many, many times for insight, and he's just, I've considered him my mentor. I've described him that way to other folks, and he's just become a close friend, and appreciate, I appreciate you, Mark. Going to miss you.
Thank you, Coach.
The Dogs. Go Dogs. Appreciate it.
Councilman Davis?
I should have been last.
Oh, okay. You want to be last because you Douglasville together.
Mark and I have been together a long time. Grew up here in Douglasville, and I tell you, we're just like family. He brought me a book with my daddy in it, and that was your mother back there during the days of Greystone Days. And we've been together a long, long time. So Mark, you know I love you, you're just like a brother. If I need you, I know where to come to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate that.
Those are DC Tigers. Where, Councilman Estes?
See, Sam, they save the best for last. Nicole said almost verbatim what I was getting ready to say. Like everyone else, I have learned so much from you, and it absolutely has made me better at this job from your example and your guidance. It is so much appreciated. But even more importantly for me, it's been a journey these past four years for me, as you well know. And your love and support and prayers have made that so much easier, far beyond what you could possibly imagine. You have been the embodiment of divine grace here for me, and I will never be able to repay you for that. So while you have absolutely earned the right to enjoy your family and your free, some of free time, a little bit more free time than you get now, you will certainly be missed by all of us up here and the entire staff. And so enjoy your retirement, and I will just say, "Well done, good and faithful servant." Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Councilman Adams, you don't know this, but we have a reception for you after the council meeting, and that's why your family is here. And so I wanted to say in addition to everything that everyone has said, we're going to have you come around, take a picture, but for me, I'm just, I'm in the middle seat, but I'm a servant like everyone on this dais. And I told you to your face, but I want to say this publicly, that you are the type of person, when you walk in the room, people want to stand up and do better. And so thank you for being my brother from another mother, that you're fair, and you've been a blessing and a true representative of a servant leader. So thank you for your example, and we got a great package to do when we got you. We got your wife, too. So every time we have, well, hopefully you'll still come for chili cook-off and decorate and win all the decorating awards for your booth and all the parades, bring your golf carts, and have your beautiful grandchildren and children come. So thank you for being my friend and not talking behind my back if you had a concern. You were not disrespectful. You came and talked to me to my face, and we always came to an agreement. So thank you for being an upstanding person, and you are an antithesis of what this community is and the fabric of this community. Your family is just ingratiated in the community. So thank you for being who you are, Councilman. We're going to miss you very, very much, and I will personally miss you. I call you friend. If you ever need me, please come and get me, and you all pull my coat tail if I start messing up. So Councilman Adams, would you like to say anything before we take a picture?
Well, I feel as though I was not in any way prepared for this. And we'll talk about that later. I was asked earlier before I came to the meeting, "What's for dinner tonight, Mr. Adams? Do you know?" I think I told him I'd eat leftovers when I came home. Little did I know. But first of all, let me thank each of you all for being here. It's really special. Thank each of you on the council and Madam Mayor for tolerating me for 12 years. Very short story, and you all, some of you may have heard it. I never considered public service, but the last 12 years has been a great lesson to me, and all of you had a part. Thank you to my family, to Sandra and the kids, and all my extended family for allowing me to do it. She is responsible for me being here, other than, of course, the citizens electing me. But I listened. The Lord led me to do this, and I challenge each of you here on this dais as elected officials. If you if you're not doing it for the city and for the citizens that have elected you, then you're not doing it for the right reason. I ask God to be your guide. I'll be praying for you. I want you to know that I truly love each and every one of you. I appreciate everything that we've been able to accomplish, but I take no credit for that. I credit Him. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Councilman.
Okay. All right. Perfect. On the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. And then one more. One, two, three. Actually, one more. Big smiles. One, two, three. Great. And now the family. Coach Watts. Coach Watts. Coach Watts, can you, can you come to right here, right back? Can you move to the Okay. On the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. And then last one, big smiles. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Thank you all so much for allowing us to do that. We are people, too, although we serve, so we have to take time out to show appreciation and give honor where honor is due. We're going to go through the updates from city staff, and if you all like to say anything, I know you would have an opportunity to at this time. You're certainly welcome. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
I just want to say thank you to Councilman Adams for always keeping me on my toes and for welcoming me to this role a year and a half ago, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you so much. Our deputy chief.
Thank you for your service, sir. Know about their business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief Davidson. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Adams, we got you. So we did. Thank you, Ms. Adams, Ms. Sandra, we got you. But I do have a message from your resident citizen, Ms. Cindy Welch. She says to pass on, she's texted me a message to, that please don't forget her. She knows that the meetings have been fairly quiet without her, and to make certain that you have her phone number so that you and Ms. Sandra and y'all can go out to lunch. So that's the message I'll pass on to you. But
Thank you.
But definitely, just to pass on, I think on behalf of all staff, as the mayor said, we do have a reception for you. We have a special presentation for you as well, and you and I have spoken, so I've said my words to you personally, and you know, and I do think I expressed this on behalf of staff, it's always a pleasure to work and serve. I believe that we all serve with you all. So even though you all are our bosses, we do serve with you. And so when you do have a servant's heart and you're able to do that with humility and grace, it makes our job easier. And I think that everything that you have done in the last 12 years, you can see that in your district and throughout the city, and I think that that is a testament to how you have served and you have served with us. So we appreciate it. I appreciate your leadership, and it cannot be replaced. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, city manager. Thank you, citizens, for your patience. If you have sustained the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, we have comments from citizens and delegates. You can come down to the microphone. You have five minutes to talk to us about any business you remain to the city of Douglasville. We welcome your comments. We don't have any takers, what? Okay. Well, if we don't have any other business, this is the last time you're going to hear me say this, Councilman Adams, but we're going to keep you roped in some kind of way. If we don't have any other
Can I say one other thing I forgot to say?
Yes, sir. You can say whatever you want to say.
And this is advice to our mayor and council. Whatever you do, don't let the staff get away. I credit them, along with our Lord, in getting everything done that we've been able to accomplish. Please don't let them get away. I don't know what you've got to do. Just don't raise my taxes.
Yes, sir. Don't raise your taxes. Now, you see how fast he flipped over? No. We don't have any comments from citizens and delegates, so we don't have any other business. Now, you see all the staff is here for you, Councilman Adams. So we don't have any other business. This meeting is adjourned, and we'll go into the reception. Thank you so much. God bless you. This meeting is adjourned.